Before we proceed, I'd like to briefly turn the meeting over to one of our outstanding students who will receive the President's Award tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome to the dais, Michael Baraney from Tierra del Sol Elementary School.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa, and good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Baraney, and I am a student at Tierra del Sol Elementary School. It is my honor to call this meeting to order.
Good evening, and welcome to the Isleta School District Meeting of Board of Trustees. Whether you are here to address the board or to celebrate the accomplishments of those being honored here this evening, we appreciate that you have taken the time to join us. We invite you to share your comments with the board during the public comment portion of our meeting. The public comment sign-up cards show the rules for participating. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on the issue raised. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students, and ask that we all conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. Please turn off or silence all cell phones, tablets, and other electronic devices, and thank you for your attendance. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at six minutes after six. We have a quorum with Soltero Ramirez, Charlie Bustillos, Richard Cudair, Connie Woodruff, Mike Rosales, Catherine Lucero, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Before we begin with our meeting, I honor and thank the outgoing officers for their mentorship and their continued support. I am also humbled and honored to introduce our newly elected officers. Trustee and Vice President, Mr. Richard Cudair. Secretary of Metis, Kathleen Lucero. And myself, President of the Isleta Independent School Board of Trustees. I just want to thank everyone for their support. I am so humbled by all the well wishes that I've received. This is not something I did by myself. My colleagues here, Ms. Woodruff, Mr. Rosales, Mr. Soltero, and everybody else, I mean, we joined about two years ago, and they've been great mentors, they've been great leaders, and I look up to them, and I still do. And hopefully, we will fulfill the role, I mean, the goals that we have set before us. And I just want to thank you all, and I want to do the best I can to my ability, and let's see what happens. Thank you.
Do you mind, President, President Ochoa, do you mind if I say a few words? Once again, I want to thank the rest of my trustees for giving me the honor of serving as Vice President. I remember when I started two years ago for our exiting officers, they could have very easily said to the four new ones, "You guys are newbies, just sit and learn and watch for a little bit," but they empowered us, they encouraged us to be advocates for our community, and they extended an olive branch to us, and I am incredibly grateful for the support that they gave us for those first two years. As we move forward with our new elected officers, I want to extend that same olive branch to them and say that we need their leadership and their guidance, they are still incredibly important to this, and the most important thing that I've learned in the two years that I've been on the board is that by ourselves, we can do nothing, but as a group, we can be a movement for progress and innovation in the public education system. And I know that as we move forward in these next two years, it'll take all seven of us to work together to make this a successful board, and more importantly, to make it a success for our community, for our students, and for our educators. And so, I am humbled to be serving as Vice President for the next two years, but I am grateful for the six other people sitting up here and the people sitting down there, the cabinet, and our Superintendent, Dr. Delatorre, for everything that they do to make this district the district of innovation, the district of leadership, and the district that is the model for all other districts across the state of Texas.
Thank you.
I'll be brief, I just want to say, these are tough shoes to fill. You guys, our previous officers, they taught us a lot, gave us our, gave us our start and opened us with welcome arms, with open arms, and we owe you a lot, and want to thank you for that, and we hope, I hope to continue our working as a team and making this a very strong board, as we always have been, and doing everything in the best interest of our community, of our teachers, and our students.
I would also like to take this opportunity to appoint Trustee Charlie Bustillos as a Board's Parliamentarian. Trustee Bustillos, do you accept?
Well, first of all, does anybody have a definition of a parliamentarian? I do accept, yes, sir.
Secretary Lucero, would you please lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance and the Moment of Silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dr. Delatorre, do you have recognitions this evening?
Yes, President Ochoa, members of the board, esteemed guests, this evening we have a number of presentations. At this time, I'd like to invite our Chief Communications Officer, Ms. Patricia Ayala, to do the introductions.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Superintendent Delatorre. We have five recognitions for you this evening. At this time, we ask that you please come to the front of the dais for the presentations. We also ask audience members to please remain seated until recognitions are complete. Our first recognition is in honor of Michael Baraney, a fifth grader at Tierra del Sol Elementary School, who has proven himself as a true leader among his peers by helping those in need, particularly children suffering from pediatric cancers. Over the past two years, Michael has participated in a special fundraiser for St. Balrick's, a childhood cancer foundation that supports research to find cures for cancers that affect children. However, this particular fundraiser asks participants to shave their heads, a task not many elementary school students will voluntarily sign up to do. But Michael has really participated in the fundraiser for two years, along with players from the El Paso Rhinos hockey team. In total, Michael has raised more than $1,200 for this cause, while the Rhinos have raised under $14,000 this year for St. Balrick's. The fundraiser may have cost Michael his hair, but school officials say this doesn't seem to faze him because he knows that many children and their families will benefit from the money he helped raise. He is another wonderful example of service excellence in the district, and we are proud to call him one of our own. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome this month's President's Award winner, Michael Baraney. Michael is accompanied by Assistant Principal, Ms. Rebecca Parada. Our next recognition tonight is in honor of five students from the Young Women's Leadership Academy who won the STEM Research Project Award at the West Texas VEX Robotics Regional Championships that took place in March, qualifying them to compete at the World Championship in Louisville, Kentucky. These students, who call themselves the Golden Girls, won their category for demonstrating mastery in collecting research and evidence, as well as testing and explaining their findings. Congratulations on a job well done. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our West Texas VEX Robotics Regional Champions from the Young Women's Leadership Academy, starting with Ariel Garcia, and Delaney Amaya. Let's hear it one more time for our VEX Regional Champions. Our next recognition is in honor of a team of four outstanding robotics students from Tierra del Sol Elementary School. This team, called the Cyber Knights, won first place in our Superintendent's Cup Competition, qualifying them for the North America 2019 Competition of RoboRave, which stands for Robots Are Very Educational. At RoboRave, these six great students dominated forty-three other teams to win first in a category called the Amazing Challenge, where they were only given two minutes to design and program a robot to complete the path of an elevated maze. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome our 2019 North America RoboRave Champions from Tierra del Sol Elementary School, starting with Jocelyn Tabarez and Liza Dominguez. Students are accompanied by robotics coaches, Ms. Rebecca Castañeda, and Ms. Patty Hernandez, Let's hear it one more time for our RoboRave winners. Our next recognition is in honor of Belair High School senior Sarah Murillo, whose original artwork, called Mi Abuelita, was chosen among more than a hundred entries as the winner of the 2019 Congressional Art Competition for District 16, represented by Congresswoman Veronica Escobar. As the winner, Emily and her family will be flown to Washington, D.C. this summer to see the installation of her artwork in the hallways of the U.S. Capitol, where it will remain on display for one full year. More than 650,000 U.S. high school students have participated in the Congressional Art Competition since it began in 1982. In our 16th Congressional District, Isleta ISD students have been a dominant force in this art competition, which we have won for the past 12 years. Of this year's 10 finalists, nine came from our high schools, including Belair, Eastwood, Hanks, Parkland, and Valle Verde. Congratulations to all our talented student artists. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate the 2019 Congressional Art Award winner for District 16, Sarah Murillo. Sarah is accompanied by art teachers Cesar Aguayo and Assistant Principal, Mr. Rob Let's hear it one more time for Sarah. Our next recognition this evening is our Partner of the Month Award, which we are giving to a group of physicians who volunteer in the district's Adopt a School program. Through this program, five local pediatricians, Dr. Gilbert Handel, Dr. Patricia Azcaron Samente, Dr. Eduardo Covarrubias, Dr. Hassan Salum, and Dr. Amado Ramirez, visit our campuses to provide free medical care for students without health insurance. These five doctors take time away from their own practice every month to donate one day of service at our schools, where they provide care to students and educate parents about health practices. This program is truly a lifesaver for some of our families. We are extremely grateful to these physicians for their willingness and enthusiasm to partner with us in this venture, and for demonstrating outstanding commitment and service excellence to our students and families. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a big round of applause to our June Partner in Education, our adoptive school physicians. Here to accept the award, on behalf of all the five adoptive school physicians, is Dr. Gilbert Handel. Our final recognition tonight is in honor of our outgoing Board Officer, Officers, excuse me, Ms. Woodruff, Mr. Ramirez, and Mr. Rosales. Will you please step forward? As Board Officers, you have all dedicated an enormous amount of time and energy to the Isleta Independent School District. On behalf of our schools and our students, we extend our deepest thanks and gratitude on the outstanding job you have done over the past two years. At this time, Superintendent Delatorre, we'd like to present you with a small token of Let's hear it one more time for outgoing Board Officers, Ms. Connie Woodruff, Mr. Soltero Ramirez, and Mr. Mike Rosales.
If you are here to speak on the budget, we will address you during the public hearing. Secretary Lucero, do we have requests for citizens' input?
No, sir, we don't.
Oh, she said no. Oh, I didn't hear. Okay. The Order of Business shall be set out and is posted agenda unless changed by consensus of the board. During the board workshop, Consent Item Number Eight was pulled for separate consideration. Trustee Ramirez will recuse himself. Policy Action Item Number Three, CVE, has been pulled by the administration for a future date. Are there, are there any items you would like to pull off the consent agenda for separate If not, thank you, the agenda will be considered the consensus of the board. Dr. Delatorre, do you have anything for the board?
President Ochoa, members of the board, just two things. The first is, I know we've mentioned it, but I wanted to take a moment to personally thank Chair Woodruff, the two other officers. I can't express how much they've all accomplished over the last, not just two years, but four years, in terms of the leadership that they've provided on this board. This board has evolved from an average board to a cohesive, high-performing board who has delivered on all of their promises to their constituents, to our community, and more importantly, to our children, our faculty, and our staff. The Isleta Independent School District is highly regarded, highly respected, and a lot of that has to do with the relationship that our officers have developed with the rest of the board to become one unit, and I can't be more appreciative. Anything that I get in the way of compliments, I always refer to the difference having a board that's willing to trust in the administration, have confidence in the administration, and frankly, the most important element is, of course, doing right by kids and being student-centered, and that has been the case during this last cycle. So, I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. They've, they've made this role, just a wonderful role, one that very few superintendents get to experience, frankly, and I know that it will continue. We've still got a lot of work to do in this school district on behalf of 41,000 students, and I couldn't be surrounded with more committed, passionate people who are doing things for the right reasons, and so I look forward for that to continue. I also did want to take a moment and introduce someone you may have all not had the opportunity to meet with us today was the new principal at Tierra del Sol. to meet with us today was the new principal at Tierra del Sol Elementary School, Ms. Romero, if you'll stand. She will replace Juan Guzman. I've known Ms. Romero since about, I believe, 2008, 2009, somewhere back then, and she was a phenomenal instructional leader in the Socorro Independent School District, and she will now help lead one of our elementary schools. So we look forward to great things from Ms. Romero. She's an outstanding, outstanding instructional leader, and we're delighted to have her and we're fortunate to have you. So welcome to the district, also known as the bright side of George Dieter. Just kidding. All great school districts in the El Paso region, but welcome, Michelle, and thank you for pursuing the opportunity.
Okay, thank you, Dr. De La Torre. The Order of the Agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion? And second, on the consented agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration?
Mr. President, I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
May I have a second? Ms. Woodruff? We have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. The motion passes. The motion passes. Okay. Okay, pull consent agenda items, number eight, approval award of amendment number five to YSD contract number 20080385 with El Paso Community College. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve a ward of amendment number five to the YSD contract number 20080385, restated and amended interlocal agreement with the El Paso Community College for the continuation of the Valle Verde Early College High School as shown in the contract as presented.
We have a second by Ms. Connie Woodruff?
President Ochoa?
Yes.
That was a little too early, so can we start that one again, please? I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, I didn't get to vote on that. All right. Start from number eight.
Do you want me to start from the motion or from?
Yes, please, if you don't mind.
Okay. I move to approve a ward of amendment number five to YSD contract number 20080385, restated and amended interlocal agreement with the El Paso Community College for the continuation of the Valle Verde Early College High School as shown in the contract as presented.
Now, we have.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, we have a difference. So you're the second? Okay. Ms. Woodruff? We have a second by Ms. Woodruff, and please cast your votes. All right. We have a six for the. Six approved? Yes. One abstention from Mr. Ramirez. It's been approved. We now move on to the public hearing. As a taxing entity, the district is required to provide an annual forum for the public to provide input on the district's proposed budget. This is the hearing for that purpose. The Board of Trustees appreciates your attendance and welcomes your input during the public hearing. Please observe the following rules. Individuals wishing to speak are limited to three minutes. If you have not signed up on the sign-in sheet to speak, please do so at this time located on the table by the entry door. If you are part of a group of more than five persons, please select a spokesperson to speak for the group. Secretary Lucero, is there anyone who has signed up to speak?
No, sir.
If there are no speakers, I will close the public hearing. All right, now we move on to the policy action items. Policy CH Local Purchasing and Acquisition. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I move to approve YSD-specific language regarding additional delegation of authority to superintendent or designee for certain budgeted purchases and contracts and contract amendments as shown in the proposed policy revision as presented.
We have a second by Ms. Woodruff, Connie Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are in. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. Policy CI Local School Property Disposal. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I move to approve Isleta specific revision to policy CI Local regarding disposal of discontinued or outdated instructional materials.
We have a second by Ms. Connie Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. Policy CV Local Facilities Construction has been pulled by the administration. Policy number four. Policy EIC Local Academic Achievement Class Ranking. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
I move to approve the revision to policy EIC Local to confirm conflicting provisions regarding weighted points AP examinations as shown on revision as presented.
We have a second by Ms. Connie Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. Action items. Action item number one, adopt the 2019-20 official budget. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? Trustee Lucero?
Thank you. As Board Members, adopting a budget is one of our primary responsibilities. This legislative session, the state worked hard to reform school finance through House Bill Three. This budget cycle, we were able to work on a compensation package that will positively impact all of our employees. YTA has been a staunch advocate for its employees and a strong partner with YSD. As a team with YTA, Dr. De La Torre, his staff, and the Board, we worked in the best interest of YSD employees, and I believe this is something we can all be proud of as a district. I would like to thank each and every employee here at YSD. Please know you're valued, and we wouldn't beat the district without you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve a resolution adopting the 2019-2020 official budget, including the general fund budget, the child nutrition service budget, and the debt service budget by fund and function as shown on Schedule A to the resolution, and which includes provisions to be included in the 2019-2020 Annual Compensation Plan to meet the requirements of HB III and other compensation provisions as shown in the resolution as presented.
We have a second by Mr. Richard Cudair. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. Motion passed. Okay, number two, donation to Eastwood Heights Elementary School. Okay. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Rosales? We have a second by Mr. Richard Cudair. Please cast your electronic votes.
I'm sorry, President Ochoa, we need to redo that. We didn't hear Mr. Rosales.
Okay. If we have no further discussion, may I have a motion? Mr. Rosales?
I move to accept a donation in the amount of $20,207.75 from the Eastwood Heights PTA for improvements to the running track.
Mr. Richard Cudair? A second? Please cast your electronic votes. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed.
Just very briefly, I think our benefactors are here with us this evening. If you'll stand and allow us to express our gratitude, I believe they're back with Principal Nauvoo. Thank you so much. The Board and I, and I'm sure that the students at Eastwood Heights greatly appreciate your contribution, and we're delighted that you're so involved in our school program. Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add. I'm sorry I didn't get to meet you before the meeting, but I certainly want to thank you. Thank you for all your efforts in that school. It's a wonderful school. We're proud of it, but we're very proud of the fact that you're doing what you've done to the improvement of that track. Again, thank you so much.
Item number three. Approve the internal audit plan for 2019-2020. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? If no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the 2019-2020 internal audit plans as presented by the internal auditor.
We have a second by Ms. Connie Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. Item number four. Approval of superintendent award of YSD cooperative requisitions for the purchase of student devices. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? No further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to authorize a superintendent or designee to approve a ward of YSD cooperative requisitions with vendors providing best value for the purchase of student devices in an amount not to exceed $1,400,000 from various district funds through a purchasing cooperative contingent upon final negotiations, in-house council review, and Form 1295 Certificate of Interested Parties.
We have a second by Ms. Connie Woodruff. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. Item number five. Approve award of YSD solicitation number BD19-01-RFQ Program Management Services 2019 bond. Using your electronic hand, is there any discussion? One board member is waiting to speak. Somebody? Ms. Lucero?
Thank you. I would just like to say to our VLK Architects, during this next process, we will hold you to the highest level of accountability, and that's it.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, may I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve a ward of YSD solicitation number BD19-01-RFQ with VLK Architects, Inc. for Program Management Services 2019 bond effective June 18, 2019, and should run until November 5, 2024, or until work is completed, whichever is sooner, for a not-to-exceed amount of $75,000 for pre-election work and 2.45% of construction cost, projection cost for post-election work from various district funds contingent upon final negotiations and in-house council review.
We have a second by Mr. Richard Cudair. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. At this time, we're going to, the Board of Trustees has determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this state. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-0, I mean, .001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code 551 dot 071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 821, 83, and 84. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote with regard to any matter considered in closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now move to the Rio Grande Room for closed session at 6:52 -- I mean, 7:52. now move to the Rio Grande Room for closed session at 6:52 -- I mean, 7:52. 6:53. 6:53.
Richard Cudair, Connie Woodruff, Mike Rosales, Catherine Lucero and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Possible actions after closed session, possible action regarding personnel complaint? May I have a motion? That's you. He didn't give it to you?
No.
Yeah, you said to me to leave. But I... Do we leave in here? Oh, Mr. Soltero. Mr. Soltero? Can you do it to ask myself, please? Thank you.
That's all right.
I move that the board authorize the board president to work with administration as discussed in closed session.
We have a second by Ms. Connie Woodruff. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Results are seven in favor, zero opposed. That's it. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move for adjourn.
Thank you. Hey, thank you, guys.